Welcome to the Lake Mills City Council meeting for March 21st, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, thank you. So, next is correction and approval of the city council minutes of March 7th, 2023. We need discussion? Can we get a motion?
I move to approve the city council meeting minutes of March 7th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. All those in favor? Five oh, motion carries. All right, next is the correspondence. So, there is no public hearings tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So, the floor is open for public comment.
President Waters, just for your information, you did skip correspondence. You can come back to that in the future if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Is he coming back here?
We're going to go ahead and push forward with open comment. Thank you.
Good evening.
I was just anxious to get to open comment. I wanted to hear from you.
Mark Andreaking, Fire Chief of the City of Lake Mills. After watching last week's city council meeting and the Lake Mills Town Board meeting, I have some very strong concerns. There's been four feasibility studies since 2000, and each feasibility study has stated that the EMS should be in the fire station under the direction of the fire chief. We spent how many thousands of dollars? And this council sat there last fall and made the statement that they weren't going to make any decisions until the feasibility study came back and they would go from there. The feasibility study came back again that the fire department should hire seven people and be housed, the EMS be housed in the fire station underneath the direction of the fire chief. I have no vested interest in this because I am not going to be the fire chief for much longer. That's going to be hired out. You guys, keep putting roadblocks up, moving the goalposts. Need a billing service. And for some reason, Mr. Fields is the apparent guru of EMS. Nobody contacted Captain Theater who put this together about having Andres as the billing service and the reasons why. They were going to save the city money for billing. And I believe there is a memo in the packet tonight showing that from Mr. the city manager. Every place we go, we hit a roadblock. Now, I see the town of Lake Mills and the town of Milford are going with Cambridge Fire or Cambridge EMS as a paramedic unit. All right? The gentleman from Cambridge EMS has already stated that he needs the City of Lake Mills to make his service viable. Last year in April alone, April 10th, April 11th, April 19th, April 20th, April 23rd, April 24th, April 28th, April 30th, they were out of service. And the City of Jefferson had to cover their district. So, that not only puts the residents of their district in jeopardy, it also puts the City of Jefferson's district in jeopardy because they're running over to Cambridge. We have 26 medically trained personnel, including paramedics, EMTAs, EMT basics, and myself as an EMR, the lowest one on the totem pole. Okay? I hold the same credentials as Mr. Fields, and I do not claim to be the know-all of EMS. But I've been contacted by numerous chiefs in the state of Wisconsin and far away as Kansas City, Missouri, and Baton Rouge, Louisiana. They're willing to come up here and explain to you why Firebase EMS is the way to go. The day of cheap fire service paying these guys $10 an hour to go to a call is gone by the wayside. Western Lakes, they're hiring right now firefighter paramedics, $85,000 to start. Lieutenants with a fire and a paramedic license, $95,000 an hour. Their battalion chiefs, $105,000 an hour. Their assistant chiefs, $125,000 an hour. And their fire chief is making $150,000 an hour. There's a reason why the City of Jefferson, the City of Watertown are having problems hiring firefighter paramedics. They're leaving Watertown and they're going Western Lakes, Wauwatosa, in the Milwaukee area where they're making a lot more money. We have an ambulance sitting there, ready to go. We had to do some paperwork changing after Todd passed away. We had to get his name off of it and put Joel's as a lead and another firefighter captain. But we just gotten word yesterday that all the paperwork's good and we're hoping by the end of the month, we'll be able to run. So, I'm asking you to take the billing off the table tonight and okay Andres' billing services to be our biller so when that comes time, we can start running our ambulance. We went to a call up at Rock Lake Manor.
Hey, Mark, can you wrap up your conversations quickly?
Okay. We went to a call up at Rock Lake Manor. A woman laying on the floor having a stroke. Last point seen normal two hours earlier. So, that means she's been stroking for two hours. You have a golden hour to get her to the hospital. All right? We had to wait for Jefferson to get there to transport. Now, if that was my loved one or any one of your loved ones laying there, I got to believe you'd rather see us pull up with an ambulance and be able to transport that person in a timely manner. Okay? I understand where we're at right now that there's going to be a private service covering the City of Lake Mills. I can tell you this, town of Milford, town of Cambridge, or town of Lake Mills is going with Cambridge. Talking with the fire chief in Jefferson, the town of Lake Mills EMS district in the town of Assaline is going with Jefferson Fire with wording in the contract that they will give it over to Lake Mills Fire when the ambulance becomes primary in the Lake Mills Fire Station. So, I'm just asking you to quit moving the goalpost and let us get our service up and running for the second out unit. That's, I mean, and Joel can, Joel, he can answer all the billing questions for you. He had it all worked out, and I know Drake has a memo in there, and that lays it out pretty well, too. What was really frustrating is that no one came over and asked questions prior to tabling this last week. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Dave Silbeck, you need my address?
Yes, please.
304 Fremont Street. I guess they're all streets in Lake Mills, aren't they, just about?
Pretty much.
That was something different. In North Dakota, you had streets going north and south, avenues going east and west, so... Sorry. In 1994, I became a Wisconsin Certified Firefighter I with Pittsfield Fire and EMS in Pittsfield, Wisconsin, the exact center of the state of Wisconsin. That's their claim to fame. I became an EMR, then known as a first responder then at that time in 1995, and Pittsfield was able to license me to work as an EMT. In 1996, I became a National Registered Basic EMT with Pittsfield. In June of 2000, I moved to Leonard, North Dakota, 256 people, and joined the Leonard Fire Protection District as a firefighter EMT. Within a short time, I moved up through the ranks to become chief until in 2005, I moved to Altera, Minnesota, near Winona. Again, I joined the fire department and EMS. Again, I moved up through the ranks and left there as chief of the department prior to moving to Lake Mills in 2017. I told both of those departments that they wanted me to leave, make me chief, and they did, and I left. I came to Lake Mills in May of 2017 where I was accepted as a firefighter EMT and the department chaplain. I have been blessed to minister to communities where I could for the past 29 years, serve the community I lived in those capacities. For 29 of my almost 33 years of ministry, I have served. I have known great joy and have suffered tremendous pain and loss. I feel I've been called by God to do what I do. There are times I wish it were not so. In 2017, I took a call from a congregation where I was serving 160 members in a town of 500. We responded to approximately 80 to 85 EMS calls a year, 10 to 14 fire calls. The major reason I did not join Lake Mills EMS when I moved here was due to their call volume, as I now serve a congregation of 600 in a town of 6,000. In the almost six years I have been here, I have led funeral services for approximately 78 individuals. The reason I tell you this is not to impress you. Much like Brett Favre, if you hang around long enough, you get to see a lot of things. Being a person who is around especially during the daytime has allowed me to be available for many calls where others could not. I felt it was a privilege to serve. But many no longer see it as a privilege or a duty to serve their communities. According to the Wisconsin Office of Rural Health, 41% of EMS agencies rely on six or fewer staff to respond to 80% of their calls. For many agencies that they provide EMS services utilizing aging staff, where if one member finally retires, they do not know if they will be able to keep their agency going. My former department in Altera has experienced this since I left six years ago. Three other longtime members, all older than I am, and I'm 62, retired within a year of my leaving. They have struggled for the past five years, at times needing to have other services cover their response area. When the possibility arose over a year ago that Lake Mills Fire might be needed to provide EMS services here, I will tell you I was not enthused about that possibility. Part of that was because, again, as I said, I'm getting a little old and I'm very busy. But I witnessed those tasked with determining if this was feasible put themselves wholeheartedly into the process more than once, only to be told the work they did was for nothing. When the city decided to hire an expert in this field to judge what was needed to be done to provide the best service for our community, I thought we would finally have someone from the outside who could give us good impartial advice. Then I experienced the city council deciding they would not listen to that advice, that somehow they could make wiser decisions than someone whose profession it is to advise them. I can only assume this was done to save money. The conclusion I have come to is someone on the city council has an ax to grind with the fire department or some of its members. I'm aware of the hurt that occurred years ago between the fire and EMS. We cannot live our lives looking in the rearview mirror. Most of the staff of the present fire department were not here when this occurred, but it appears to still be an issue. In Lake Mills, I have been encouraged by those who have been willing to serve this community in the fire service. Not all of them are sitting behind me. You should be encouraged as well because many departments are struggling to find anyone who is willing to take the training and the time to serve. Those willing to serve are no longer an endless pool like they were when I started 30 years ago. Every agency across our nation is having challenges to recruit, train, and retain quality individuals. Those who want to be heroes do not last long, but those who want to serve are golden. We want to serve. We are trained to serve. We are committed to serving our community. We are called to serve. Let us serve.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Went, 145 East Oak Street, Lake Mills. I'm here on behalf of the Lake Mills Optimists Club regarding one of the council business item nine slash D. Basically, we're asking for a waiver of fees for an event coming up, and then we have a few other events where we use the city property. So, the item and question tonight is the Easter egg hunt that we are planning for April 8th at Commons Park. And we've submitted the applications and the certificate of insurance naming the city as an additional insured. We've done that for the last 20 years, and we serve that event as for kids seven and under. And we usually get about 250 to 300 kids down there. Time of the event is about two minutes, picking up 1,500 eggs. So, it's, if you get a chance to come down that day, you'll be enthused and excited about what happens. So, what we're trying to do is, we understand that there's some kind of a fee to use the city facilities for some of our events. Another event that we have coming up is the Junior Fisheries, which is the first Saturday in June, and the fire department helps us out quite a bit on that, and we appreciate their support. And that event gets about 100 kids. And again, we have to submit the proper application so that we can use the, I guess, basically that street and the mill pond area for that. So, last year, the Optimists Club ran about 1,400, 14 events, and we affect about 1,800 kids per year. We kind of keep track of what we do. And the club is focused just on doing stuff for the kids. And one thing that we do, we're pretty proud of, is the last 20 years or so, we've donated $500 to the LD Fargo Summer Reading Program. So, we feel we're doing a lot of, you know, good service for the kids of Lake Mills, and we're hoping that you guys could talk about getting rid of those fees for that usage. So, any questions?
All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Did you have a question? Okay. All right, the floor is open. You can refer, you can have somebody else speak.
I reside at 423 Margueret Street here in Lake Mills. Chief Mark asked me to mention that the Cambridge service, while it is a paramedic service, does not run full-time as a paramedic service. Sometimes, even though it might say "paramedic" on the side of that unit, it runs as a different level of service. Ryan Brothers is or will run as a paramedic service if they were contracted to be our medical provider here. In addition, outside of the scope of my position with Lake Mills Fire, I want all of you to know that I worry about my children every day. You know, I, we go outside, we play, we do a lot of things, and I've got four kids, and I wonder if something were to happen to them, how long would I have to wait for my own children to receive the care that they deserve? And I feel like we pay a fair amount of tax here, so much that we get what we pay for in most other regards. We've got a great school system. We've got a great library system. You know, our streets department is great. I don't feel the same way about where we're at right now with our level of service with EMS. And maybe just take that into consideration. I have other neighbors, too, that I've spoken with that have young children. And what happens to one of the parents if they're hurt? How long do their kids have to sit and wait for help to come? For them to get transported and get the care that they deserve? So, if that means anything, I just present that for your consideration.
Any questions for Josh?
Good evening. My name is John Helt. I live at 509 West Lake Street here in Lake Mills. I've resided there since 2011. I'm also a member of the Lake Mills Fire Department. I have been a member of the fire department since 2010. I've been a medical member on top of being a firefighter with the department since 2012, eventually becoming an EMT later on. Originally, I was an EMR. Most of you probably don't realize this. I don't come to a ton of meetings. I unfortunately am quite busy, but I am also a captain with the fire department and have been since late 2014. I get up here tonight, one, to present on my opinion of some of the items as it pertains to later in your agenda, specifically the EMS billing item agenda and the agenda item regarding EMS services. As it relates to the billing service, I have no opinion. We've elected all of you to be members of the city council to make those decisions for us. I'm currently not educated enough on all of the options to persuade you one way or the other, but I do want to comment on the fact that I urge you to make a decision. It is very difficult to respond to fire calls and specifically EMS calls and not be able to fully provide the service that we've all been trained to do. There's an ambulance sitting there, and it'd be awfully nice to follow through and actually utilize that equipment when needed. So, I urge you to make a decision on that this evening. The second item regarding EMS services, I, again, do not have a decision as I am not educated enough on this point, and I don't have enough data, and I don't have the time necessarily to dive into the data due to other activities and my other career objectives that I have to primarily focus on. But again, I want to urge you to make a decision on that service as well. Whatever you feel is best, based on the data that you've been presented, based on all of the studies, based on all of the facts and findings that you have. Being a person that is volunteering my time at this point, yes, we are paid on call, but it is not a job for me. This is my time giving back, and I would like to have all of the tools available to provide the services that we can offer. There's many people back here trained to levels that cannot use those services. So, again, I urge you to do that. In closing, I just want to thank you all. Thank you all for giving up your time to be on this board, your evening and your extra time spent. These are not early evenings. They go late, and I respect your willingness to give up that time with your families and your friends and be here to do that. So, thank you again.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John.
My name is Clayton Schultz. I live on 258 Crestview Lane here in the city. I have been a volunteer firefighter EMT since I was 19 years old. I've been a member of three departments. Two and a half years ago, my wife and I were looking to buy a house. We specifically bought a house in Lake Mills because it was so apparent after talking to Chief Todd and a few of the other leadership members of the department that this is somewhere I not only wanted to work, but I wanted to raise a family and continue my fire, my volunteering career. In the small towns that I have been lucky enough to be a part of their departments, it's apparent that none of us members are in it for the money. We're not in it for the fame. There is none. There is very little recognition. You do it because you love your community, and you feel so strongly about your community that you are willing to sacrifice a lot of your time, as you guys do as well. I've done my time on a two-year stint on a city council, and it frankly sucks. So, I do thank you guys for spending your time to do it because more times than not, it's not a great experience. So, but what I really want to say is, outside of due diligence in making these decisions, and I do understand they're difficult, we're dealing with a lot more than just our personal opinions on things, you know, taxpayer money, things like that, and the safety of our residents. But outside of doing your due diligence, putting off, you know, moving through this process whatsoever is only hurting the community. This group of people, and not everyone is here tonight, but the guys and gals on the City of Lake Mills are one of the most impressive groups of people that I have ever had the privilege to work with, and I would be so lucky if I needed them that they would show up at my house. So, any second, minute, hour, day that we are not allowed or able to use our ambulance is only hurting the city. And when I heard that we were going to be running, because I haven't had the ability to run EMS for a while, I was very excited as an EMT. That's something I quite enjoy because it's a very direct way to help your community members, as is firefighting, but in a little bit different way. So, again, I want to, I want to thank you guys for doing what you're doing, and I hope that we can keep this process going so that we can do what we like to do because it's helping our community. So, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
I didn't quite catch the first name. Was it Clay?
Clayton.
Clayton. All right. Any questions for Clayton? Thank you, sir. Floor is open. Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. Thank you. All right, let's go back to correspondence. Mrs. Bishop?
Let me do this really slowly so I can open my book in time and get to my notes. Hold on.
Do you want me to move? I can start.
No, I got it.
All right.
You just caught me off guard there. I had a correspondence from somebody on the Division on Addiction Resources asking us to put their contact information on the city webpage. I know we get a lot of those, and we typically decline, so I had not yet responded to that. And then I had a phone call in support of the ATV ordinance amendment on the agenda for tonight, and that was my correspondence.
Ms. Quidnow?
I had a correspondence regarding the EMS and questions and considerations. There was information emailed regarding the EMS proposals as well as a ban stand email. as well as a ban stand email, and that's all I had.
Mr. Fields?
I think I had the same email chain about the EMS. And then I also did receive a call from Tom at the town asking about or letting me know about what their schedule was looking like and kind of asking what our thoughts were on the schedule.
Ms. Curler?
I also had the request to post an organization's information on our website and several emails regarding EMS sent from Cambridge EMS and forwarded by Drake.
All right. In addition to those things, I had a Bayberry conversation. Sandy Beach Restaurant came up a couple times as I was walking around town and had a third-party billing concern related to a Lakeshore property. All right, City Manager's Report. Mr. Daley?
If there's any questions on the items included in the packet, I'm happy to provide the best answer I can. Other than that, I will be out of the office next week. So if you need to get ahold of me, I'll have my city cellphone, as well as I'll check email periodically. But I will be out of the office Monday through Friday.
Any questions? Guess you got off easy today. All right. Not totally. We still have a whole meeting to go through. So don't go anywhere yet. All right. Next, we have council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Plan Commission of February 28, 2023, Public Works Board of February 14, 2023, and Police and Fire Commission of January 19, February 9, and March 9 of 2023. Any comment or any comment from any council members on any of the committees they're on? Or any comments on any of these minutes? All right, seeing none. I'll accept these minutes into our record. Moving forward, city council business. The first one on the agenda is Resolution 2311. Let me pull that up here real quick. Let me read this real, not real fast. I'll take my time, but let me read through this real quick. "In appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills for Steve, Stephen Wilkie, whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Stephen Wilkie for his 23 years of loyal service to the city of Lake Mills and its citizens. And whereas Stephen Wilkie served as the city manager of the city of Lake Mills, tasked with utilizing his talents, expertise, and leadership to provide the highest level of service to our community. And whereas Stephen Wilkie devoted incalculable hours to advise and assist the city council in the implementation of their policies and community vision by holding himself to the highest standard of ethics and professionalism in his role as city manager. And whereas Stephen Wilkie's budgeting acumen, dedication, attention to detail, adaptability, and capital improvement planning has made a lasting and meaningful contribution to the city of Lake Mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Lake Mills, or excuse me, that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Stephen Wilkie and extends their best wishes for an enjoyable retirement adopted this 21st day of March 2023." Can I have a motion on Resolution 2311?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2311 and appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills from Stephen Wilkie. Second?
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
I would just like to express my gratitude to Steve. He's been immensely generous with his time and knowledge in assisting me as I transitioned into this role. A career of 23 years with the community is admirable and impressive. And I think the accomplishments that he has had and the progress that the community has seen during his tenure are going to be felt by the community for many years after his departure from the city. So I just want to thank him for his service, wish him well, and again, express my gratitude for the amount of time he's dedicated to help me transition into this role and impart at least pieces of his knowledge and history onto me as we move forward.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes, please.
I would also like to say thank you. Big gratitude to Mr. Wilkie. I personally think of him as a mentor. Attributes that he has that I hold in very high regard are obviously his dizzying intellect. But he is a very patient person. I tried to test that just a few times in our time together. But I have been very, very thankful and very impressed with him and have appreciated the opportunity that gave me or that he gave me to work in the city of Lake Mills. So thank you. Sincerely, Steve.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Steve, from the first probably phone call I got from you telling me that the DNR was in your office and you would like me to come up to your office, to the numerous projects we worked on, your memory never failed. Every time there was a question, you didn't even have to look up the document. You knew what the answer was for me to go look for it. A number of developments that we did throughout the years that we worked on together, as well as instrumental on a topic tonight, the street maintenance program that was developed through the time that you were here and the success that it's seen. Of course, I enjoyed the conversations about soccer as our kids went through the soccer programs throughout the state. And congrats on over 23 years of service. Good luck in your retirement. And thanks for being a good client, a good friend, over almost a quarter century. So thank you and good luck and enjoy your retirement.
Yes, you're a staff member. You can talk. You're currently a staff member.
I'm going to talk as a street department foreman and also the acting fire chief. Steve is one of the reasons that we have the equipment in the city of Lake Mills that we have. Before he came, we didn't have a vehicle replacement program. We were driving trucks that he didn't know if they were going to start during a snowstorm or fire trucks that were probably outdated at the time. When he came, we started a vehicle replacement program. He kept that going the whole time he was here. And I can honestly say, in both the street department and the fire department, we have some of the best equipment in the county right now. Our fire apparatus is top-notch. And it's all partially due to Steve letting us set up a vehicle replacement program and him keeping our feet to the coals and make sure we were doing what we needed to do with them. So thank you, Steve.
Any other staff comment? All right, from city council. I'll start. Thank you, Steve. I know that when this council turned over back in April of 2021, there was a lot of things that had to happen. And we had to learn very quickly and appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this council. I know that you gave the city a lot more for the, all those other years that you were involved. But I really do appreciate the effort, the time that you gave me while I was on city council, answering all my questions and walking through different scenarios. I didn't always agree, but we were able to talk through things. I appreciate that. So thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Steve, I want to echo that. Thank you for your support to all of us as we were newer council members over the last several years and helping us learn the ropes and understand our role and your role and giving us lots of background information and lots of history on things that we needed to learn quickly. I've lived in the community. You were the city manager when I moved here 17 years ago. And I'm aware of lots of ups and downs and things that occurred over those years. But I don't think I really understood the depth of your work until I came to the council and just see what you have to work on every day and all the constituents that you work with, the contractors, and managing a large staff. And I'm just very grateful for all the years that you've dedicated to our community. Thank you.
Yeah, just congratulations. 23 years is a long run. So it's a big milestone. So hopefully you enjoy your time. Hopefully you get a lot of time to spoil the kids now.
Mr. Wilkie, thank you for your time and service to the city. I think everybody in this room probably has a story or multiple stories about how you've affected their lives or influenced them directly. And, you know, personally for me, my transition coming out of city council, and that's kind of been the theme for me, transition, and seeing you work the city through that. And I really appreciate that. So thank you.
I'll try to be as eloquent as everyone else. Steve, it's been a pleasure. And I wish you and your family a wonderful retirement, lots of trips. And I know, based on our talks, that it has not always been an easy run and it is not an easy run being in public office. But you handled it well and you handled it with grace and patience. And it was extremely admirable to watch you work. So thank you for your time, all the time that you put in.
All right. Anything else? We ready for vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you.
You get to retire now.
So I'd like to go out and shake Mr. Wilkie's hand. It's, I've noticed that he's grown a beard since he's left us. And I didn't recognize him when he first walked in the chamber tonight. But I'm sure he's the same guy, so thank you. All right. I'm going to move an agenda item here real quick. I'm going to move Item D, Discussion Decision on Optimist Club Request for Waiver of Fees, up to the next item before we get to the talk on the Lakeshore property. So can I have a motion on the? Yeah, can I get a reading of the Optimist? Actually, it's not a, there's not a motion here necessarily, is there?
You could just make one from the floor. If there's a motion to waive the fees associated with the special event permit for their event.
Can I get a motion for that effect?
I'll make a motion to waive the event fee for the special event.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before seconding?
Sure.
How much is the fee?
I believe it's $40.
Okay. Second?
Okay, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quinnow. Staff discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said council discussion. This is an annual event that the Optimist Club holds. It is a relatively low, low-impact event discussing the Easter egg event. It's the reason that there's a, it's classified under our special event permit is that it's for exclusive use of the park. Exclusive use doesn't necessarily mean that a general member of the public cannot still go and enjoy the park, but we would not schedule another event in the park at that time. So for example, a wedding wouldn't be scheduled in the park or a concert or something to that effect at the same date. And so the exclusive use of the park, of the exclusive use of the park in past practice has kicked it over to a special event permit, which carries a fee. Past practice has been that a waiver of any type of fee is approved by the city council. And so they made that request. And so that's why it's before you tonight. I know they had also, Mr. Went had also mentioned the fishery event. I'll defer to Attorney Drescher, but I believe the, if you wanted to make a subsequent motion, it's likely general enough, the waiver of fee request on your agenda, to act on that as well. The fishery is slightly different in that it's, that's the use of the boat launch. And that precludes anybody else from being able to use it, not out of that event. So just the nature of that amenity can't be used while it's being utilized by somebody, by another party. So there is that for you to take into consideration as to whether the ability of the general public to utilize something factors in. But for the upcoming event, it's the special event permit fee waiver that's being requested. As a staff, we are taking a look at whether we should have different types of permits instead of just special event permits as far as non-exclusive uses of parks, exclusive uses of parks, to see if we can more manage these requests for use of city amenities more specifically to their nature rather than lumping them all together as a special event permit. So that's a process we're undertaking currently. But as it stands right now, such requests fall under the special event permit process.
Before we go into further discussion, Mr. Fields, did you want to amend your motion to include the fishery?
Yes, we can do that, to include the fishery, please.
Okay. All right.
Do I need to second that? I'll second that.
All right. So now we're on council discussion. Any discussion from council members? Yes.
I have two questions, Mr. Daley. One is approximately how many special event permits does the city process every year? Do you know?
I don't know. I'd have to log into the permit system and could check. But I don't know it off the top of my head.
Any idea, like ballpark, like a dozen or 100 or?
Closer to 100 than a dozen.
Yeah, closer to 100 than a dozen.
Okay.
Probably mostly centered in the summer months.
Okay. And then my second question is, I noticed this application. I was requesting a police escort. And do we charge a fee for that? And how many of those do we get a year roughly?
We have not in the past charged for use of city staff time. That's, as part of this permit review, that's something that we're looking into and also why we kind of want to break out perhaps lower-level permits to special event. And that a special event in staff's mind is really something that is not only utilizing city space but is also utilizing city resources and is kind of expanding out of just, it's not just a park that is being used, but it's perhaps closing down a street or requesting open intoxicants in an area or something of that nature, something a bit bigger than just use of Commons Park, for example. So we have not in the past billed for it. It's something that we think we probably should start doing, particularly with larger events. You can think of marathon runs or, I'm sorry, I can't think of the name.
Triathlon.
Thank you. Triathlons, where there's a significant use of police resources, streets resources, or other emergency services that probably the city should be recouping those costs. But we have not in the past.
Thank you. And then I guess I'll just add my comment that my concerns about waiving this fee are related to those two questions. One, I, you know, for those roughly 100. this fee are related to those two questions. One, I, you know, for those roughly a hundred other applicants that are paying the fee, this would seem to be unfair then to waive for one organization, and then that there are other resources that the city is using, which understandably we don't charge a fee for, but I think that's good that you're looking into that, certainly taking police away from their normal duties to do that escort. I think that's something that would be good to look at. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Daley, on the application in front of us, we have a notation that the PA system will also be used on the bandstand. Is that the city's equipment, and/or does it require city staff to help set that up, monitor, take down?
It is our PA system. I don't believe there's been a request for assistance on using it, but I would have to check with Eric, Director Schreiner, to confirm that. But it is our, it is a city system.
Okay.
And then, Duane pulled it up for me. I was a little off-base. In 2022, there were thirty-four special event permits, so it was closer to twelve, a dozen.
Thank you.
Go ahead, continue.
Yes, thank you. My other question is about the fishery event. The only information I have about that was Mr. Went's comment during public comment portion, that it's the first Saturday in June, I think I got down. So, it is a Saturday, and do you know which boat launch that's at, and then the fees at that boat launch? Because I'm wondering, like, how much time that's taking up and what fees we would be losing in lieu of.
Can we suspend the rules and have Mr. Went come up and address that?
I would make that motion, yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a motion to suspend rules by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quinnow. All in favor? Raise your hand. Five oh. Mr. Went, thank you for coming back to the microphone.
Okay, the junior fishery.
About the fishery?
Yeah, junior fishery is a relatively short event, and the reason we do it on the first Saturday of June is that that is the DNR official free fishing weekend. So, the DNR encourages any type of activity that will get people involved using, you know, their facilities, you know, taking the family out fishing, that kind of thing. So, we only run the event from nine to eleven. And, of course, we block off the road, but people come in before that with their boats to launch, and we've never really had a problem with people that are already out in the lake. Usually, they're out there, you know, longer than that time. So, and then the fire department has several people that volunteer to come down, and it acts as a good PR thing for the fire department. Kids get to interact with them, and the people in the fire department are, you know, more than willing to help out, you know, set up some chairs and tables, talk with the kids, as well as we'll have somebody from the DNR come out and spend the morning, too. So, it's a good PR thing, and the kids get a lot out of it. So, I don't think it really takes much out of the way of the city, because it's only a two-hour event. And, like I say, we have not had trouble with people that are coming out to fish, are usually, launch their boat and park away from everything. And I think one time, maybe somebody came in early, and the fire department guys just made sure all the kids, you know, were out of the way. So, I think it's a great thing for the community and for the DNR, so.
Know how many kids participate?
About a hundred, about a hundred. But there's probably a couple hundred people down there, because Grandma and Grandpa, like myself, are down there with my little guys, you know. And, you know, so it's kind of a family event, and it's very popular. And I think it shows our support of what the DNR is trying to get across to the people of Wisconsin, so.
Any other questions on the fishery? I know you had the cost discussion yet.
Well, that, which I think Mr. Daley could probably answer. Sir, what boat launch is being used?
Pardon me?
Which boat launch is being used for the fishery program?
There's just one, I think there's one boat launch down, one, there's one pier.
Sandy Beach?
But we use, what we use, the kids are all around the melbourne, so they, I mean, there might be somebody that goes on the pier to fish, but if you happen to go down there, they're spread around where the American Legion is, all around the melbourne, and basically in front of the fire department. That's where all the activity is. We set up a stand, a registration stand there. We give out free hot dogs to the kids. The DNR usually brings a lot of information, trying to explain to the kids the different types of fish, fishing techniques, and that kind of thing. So, it's a real positive thing, you know, for the community. You should come down there, have a good time.
The daily boat launch fee is seven dollars, and I'm, Mr. Went, you may, perhaps you know, in the past, have you submitted a special event permit for the fishery as well?
Yes.
So, then it would be the seven-dollar fee plus the special event permit fee as well?
Yeah, we don't actually launch any boats ourselves. We're just there, and I think any, again, any boats, people that are fishing, anybody familiar with fishing, you got to get out in the lake early. So, you know, there, there's, I think I've noticed in the past, maybe five or six trailers in the parking lot on the far end of the fire department. So, it's not like there's a lot of use, and I don't remember anybody coming in where we've had to turn them away. So, people that are there using that boat launch would have been there much before nine o'clock. Mike Mack, you know, former police officer here, he's basically in charge of that event, and he does a great job. We give out twenty-five free poles, as well as free hot dogs, and soda and water, so it's a lot of fun for the kids. And they catch more than fish. We had a big, couple big bullfrogs, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, I think they get more excited about catching them than the fish. So.
And I know you do other activities, some at the schools, like the basketball program that you have. How many, do you know how many kids you service throughout the whole year?
The last few years, it's been between eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred. We run about fourteen projects, almost one a month, pretty much. Last year, we even did something with the city band. We had a little dance contest that we ran for one of their events, which we donated two hundred dollars to that event as well, so.
Well, that's an event I'll avoid, so.
What's that?
Avoid the dance event.
But we gave all the kids some free toys and different things like that. So, you know, all the stuff that we do is basically focused on doing stuff for the kids. And we don't really have meetings per se. People that join the club join just because they want to help out and, you know, get involved with the projects. So, but again, one of the things we're very, very proud of is the five hundred dollars that we give to the library fund every year for the summer program. And I talked to Becca last week, and she's working on the new itinerary for this year. So, we'll be looking for that and be making another donation again to that.
Any other questions from Mr. Went, or?
And if I come to another meeting, I'll bring some applications for you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions in general on this motion? All right, so let me restate this. There's a motion to waive the fees for the Easter Egg hunt and the fishery for the Optimus Club. So, let's have a rule call vote.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes three-two.
All right, thank you. So, let's move to, what was item B? Just so you know, it passed. All right, just making sure, all right. Item B is a, is currently tabled, so we'll have to move this off the table. It was tabled as Resolution twenty-two dash forty-nine, so we're looking now at Resolution twenty-three dash twelve. It's a conditional use request for Steve and Julie Saniter. Can you read that for us, Misty?
City Council Resolution twenty-three dash twelve, conditional use permit declarations and findings. Steve and Julie Saniter, grading, filling, and excavation on a slope greater than twenty percent within three hundred feet of the ordinary high-water mark of Rock Lake for the purpose of constructing a patio, retaining wall, and stairs. Three oh eight Lake Shore Drive, parcel identification number two four six zero seven one three one one four three zero seven eight.
So, Mr. Drescher, what we want to do here is to remove it off table as Resolution twenty-three dash twelve? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a motion to remove it off the table?
I move to remove the City Council Resolution twenty-three dash twelve, conditional use permit for Ju... sorry, Steve and Julie Saniter with regard to their grading, filling, and excavation at three oh eight Lake Shore Drive from the table.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff discussion?
We'll hold off on any comment until after it's off the table.
Oh, we need a vote. Thank you. Can we just do all those in favor? Raise your hand. That's five oh, so it is off the table. Staff?
Mr. Karanza is online here to give us an overview of the project, and perhaps some things that have changed since this item was tabled, so, tabled. So, with your permission, I would turn it over to him.
Thanks, Drake. I'm just going to pull up the memo real quick, so we're able to see. I'm sorry there. It looked like it wasn't able to hear me, but I'll go ahead and start that again real quick. Ultimately, the original conditional use was for alternative vegetative cutting, and...
Brian, we lost your audio.
Well, it seems as though my audio goes away as I tried to share the screen. So, ultimately, I'll just bring a bit of a background, but the original conditional use was for vegetative cutting on the shoreline to prepare it for sale ultimately to construction of a new home, and eventually, potentially, some shoreline development. The proposal that's in front of you today has evolved to what is a patio space along the shoreline, as well as alternative vegetative cutting plan that meets the requirements of the original conditional use. There were, in the original plan, or in the proposed plans, stairs that are located within the right-of-way, as well as some vegetation. So, as part of the conditional use recommendation, a privilege in the street application, or some sort of amendment to that plan for the wishes of public works, is part of that condition. So, I apologize, I can't show the plan on the screen currently and still keep my audio on, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer some details.
Yes, go ahead.
Brian, I just, maybe if you can just summarize, I think when we tabled this previously, there was that question about the privilege in the street and impacts of the retaining wall, and so do we have the, we have some updated plans that are updated information that's part of the packet now? So, those issues are resolved? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So, ultimately, the issues of basically any item outside of the privilege in the street, which is an agenda item upcoming here, have been addressed by the petitioner. And I think Duane's here to speak to the specifics of how that might be treated with the privilege in the street. That is correct.
Thank you.
So, the retaining wall is out of the streets right of way, then?
If I may, yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
So, the retaining wall was, if I recall, was never in the right-of-way. It was the stairways, if I recall.
Correct, Brian, and I don't want to mix the two items, but the discussion with the retaining wall was, the retaining wall itself was going to be on the private property. However, depending on how the wall was built, and how it was supported, and how it was proposed to support the existing or any future street, could have required the petitioner to install certain reinforcement into the right-of-way, and we wanted to make sure that that was being covered as part of this permit or the privilege in the street. The petitioner has provided in your next item a letter from a soils engineering company showing how they're not going to put that material into the right-of-way, so the wall itself will be on private property. The privilege in the street, then, that you will take up next, is more so for the stairwell that Brian mentioned. I hope that helps.
Perfect, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Still trying to figure out how these two agenda items play into each other. Is there any reason or argument why if the privilege in the street were not approved, this conditional use request would be impacted or not able to come into fruition?
The recommendation from Plan Commission, ultimately, the, this item had the condition on there with the original recommendation from staff, that the privilege in the street would be required as part of the approval if there was any stairways or any part of the proposed plan to be within the right-of-way. So, they are tied in that way. As far as the site development, that might have to change ultimately if it wasn't for the privilege in the street, and the kind of the outline that the retaining wall ultimately became as part of the investigation that Duane just was referencing.
Said another way, what I still think I'm hearing is, if this agenda item is approved for the conditional use permit, then the privilege in the street also should be approved.
Correct, to have this exact design approved, correct.
I have a question for the city attorney. Is there a way that we can open up the discussion on this item to further address the privilege in the street before we get to that agenda item, so that we can consider the whole?
They're, yeah, they're both on the agenda. They're simultaneous, as was stated. What specific question do you have with regard to the privilege?
I just want to make sure that for the privilege in the street, you know, we talked about, is it going to affect traffic there, plowing in the area? I think was a specific thing that came up the last time we had this discussion. And in that regard also, is this the only privilege in the street we will have ever granted on this area? If it's not, and everybody there has a privilege in the street, like, that would lead me one way versus the other?
So, the first point, I think, is answered by Brian's last statement, that the privilege is basically necessary based on the design that has been submitted to you. The area that is most in the right-of-way is a, like, flagstone that is flat at grade. It should not interrupt or interfere with any public activities within the right-of-way. There are a couple of steps down from that at-grade starting point to go down the shoreline or to the shore, and those steps are also incorporated into a bit of the right-of-way, and that, to me, was kind of...
And that, to me, was kind of the biggest consideration in whether or not a privilege was actually necessary here. I think a flat stone at grade may not require a privilege in the street. That is everywhere throughout the city of Lake Mills when you have something that's more, a stairway or a boulder that could interfere with transit through that area. Trees potentially could require a license, certain other elements. If you drive up historical roads, Main Street and Mulberry Street, when we went through those rebuilds, carriage walks and on occasion different stair elements or fencing elements were included and privileges were granted for those. On Lake Shore Drive, there are numerous similarly situated developments such as this, where you cross the street because it's the parent lot is separated from the outlot. You cross the right-of-way to access the lake. Most all of those houses have something that's, you know, like this. There are not many privileges in the street that are granted in those locations because we have not had the opportunity to address those through design, through a permit application process. They were there at the outset. They were there when the most recent version of the zoning code was adopted. They're basically grandfathered in. Now, what protection does a privilege in the street give an entity? Really, nothing. It's an acknowledgement that the city is allowing you under a limited license to have a piece of infrastructure or an encroachment in the right-of-way, but it doesn't mean that it gets to be there forever. In the event that the city wants to remove that to do right-of-way activities, to repair, rebuild a road, we are allowed ad hoc to go through and remove those at the cost of the landowner, and we don't have any obligation to replace them in that event either. That isn't something that's exercised, but it is an ability that the city has. So where the privilege in the street comes in is knowing and basically having that contract in place between those two entities. We are allowing you to have this infrastructure, this encumbrance, this encroachment in the right-of-way. However, you are informed that it isn't a permanent right or anything like that, and we have the ability as the city to remove that if we deem necessary.
Thank you. That helps me a lot. I appreciate that.
So I just wanted to clarify real quick. Everything in the street right-of-way is at-grade?
There are mostly, but not everything. There are a couple of steps as you travel west into the lake that do travel down that are within the right-of-way. I don't know how many. It's two or three, but the majority of the flagstone of the--
At or below?
--access to that is at or below the right-of-way, yes.
Great. Ms. Curler?
Mr. Drescher, some of the things that you just said tied directly into my thoughts or concerns about this project. One, you mentioned historic, whatever that means, you know, structures that are perhaps along Lake Shore Drive in that right-of-way that don't, that exist without a privilege in the street versus this being a new proposal, new retaining wall, new patio. So when we addressed things on Mulberry Street or other, you know, historic neighborhoods, to me, that's a little bit different than, you know, contemplating doing this for a new project. I think Lake Shore Drive is, anybody who's ever driven along it, and certainly the property owners are aware, it's quite a challenge and not every outlot is the same width, and some of them are really quite constraining. And I guess I have a concern, just an ongoing concern, that we're seeing people who understandably want to make use of that outlot, but it's steep, and so they need to or desire to put in a patio and a retaining wall and stairs, but that impacts the right-of-way. And also, as you said, I think legally, the privilege of the street doesn't really give anybody a guarantee that they can keep that structure or those, you know, enjoy those features on that property, but I think granting one does give someone a feeling of that they can rely on being able to keep it even if maybe legally that's not the case. So I do have concerns about these kinds of shoreland alterations on these very narrow lots where there is, where they're, because they are so narrow, they just have to have that street encroachment, and I just think that's not a good situation. And looking down the road, I forget, is it 2027 where we're going to be looking at redoing Lake Shore Drive? And so then we're going to be looking at all of these, and it'll be very challenging when we look to do the street work there.
It is a very uniquely situated road in the city of Lake Mills. This is, the construction is, has generally been with the subject lot being on the lakeside as opposed to the right-of-way being in between. And it's definitely more considerations with this area than certain other Lake Shore areas.
And yes, you are correct. It was in, it was 2028 in the last year's CIP that you approved.
Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
Ms. Curler, I definitely see where you're going and your point with this. And I think sort of the way I'm viewing the question is with all of the other encroachments in right-of-ways on this street that were essentially grandfathered in, are we going to let a new project have the same type of encroachment with a privilege because everything else looks like that? Or are we going to say, no, moving forward, like this needs to be, I don't want to say a better design, but a different design to better meet the needs of the city, especially noting that we probably will be reconstructing that road soon? And so that's the way I'm trying to view this question. And I guess a follow-up that I would have for Brian is, is there any way, given the constraints of the lot, that this stairway could be put in with whatever retaining wall requirements without going into the right-of-way? It sounds like to me, because this has been going on a long time for discussion, that there's probably not a way to do that. If there is, I would like to know that at this point. So that's my question right now.
Is the property owner here?
Yeah.
Can we suspend the rules?
I would like to suspend the rules, so Mr. Saniter can speak.
A second. All right. So that was a motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. To suspend. So all those in favor? 5-0. Now you can speak. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the project and about the lot and why the staircase makes sense?
Okay. The staircase is, I think there is three steps in the right-of-way. And to do anything else, I would, I'd have steps that would be a slide. The grade wouldn't allow it to have the steps out of the right-of-way. Then my retaining wall would get bigger. Everything else would just get out of hand, which seems like it is now. But, you know, and the steps are, I think they're a foot below the grade, so it's not going to get in the way of plows or anything, and they're removable steps. If they have to be removed, I can, I can move them. It's not a concrete structure. Nothing's concrete, so it's a matter, if you're going through the right-of-way, I'm gonna move the steps or you're gonna knock them out, whatever. I realize that. And if that's going to be a factor in this, then there should be some sort of signature you can get from me that I know what I'm up against too. I know whatever I'm putting there can be taken out. And I sign that, and future owners can do it too. I mean, that's, that's something that I'm aware of, and I would gladly sign a paper saying, let's take them out if you have to.
Sure.
And I'm aware of what's going to go on with the road and everything else, so I kind of pre-planned for that. My steps can be moved, so.
I appreciate what you're saying and that you understand the effect of just having the right or the license to use, I want to try to use the right legal language for the city, the license to use that area, recognizing that if we do redo the street or something, the steps may get messed up or damaged.
Yep.
And so realizing that, and I appreciate that you do realize that and have taken--
I mean, I did a lot of concrete work out in front of my house, putting new curb in and new sidewalk, knowing that the road's going to come through there, and if they're going to extend that, you know, go into our property, well, I guess I'm going to lose my sidewalk. So, you know, I'm well aware of it. I've been in construction my whole life too, so I know what to expect here, I think.
Thank you, sir.
And the original thing was coming back here to get it off the table, as far as I'm concerned, is getting that letter from an engineer that the wall can withhold the road loads. So you're not held responsible. If that wall blows over, I'm not going to say, hey, it's your fault, you drove your trucks on it. So I spent a lot of months trying to get that letter. But that's what, that's what my impression was of this whole thing. So really, the steps in the right-of-way stuff really shouldn't come into play, as far as I'm concerned. Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? I'd like to make a quick comment. I lived in this neighborhood for a while, and I know the challenges of this property, the steepness of the, of that outlot, and the challenges of trying to work within the street right-of-ways. And it looks like this is a very nice project. Looks like it'll increase the usage of that outlot and bring some enjoyment to the people that live there. And is a good use of that outlot, actually. So I'm in favor of this. Good job with putting this all together. And I did notice that it was approved by the Planning Commission earlier. Any other comments? All right, let's move to a roll call. We brought it off-table. Do we need to have a motion?
Yeah, motion to adopt it now, yep.
Do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-12?
I move to adopt Resolution 23-12.
A second. Motion to adopt by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. And we've already gone through the discussion part of it, so any other comments? Let's go to roll call.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. So next is a related issue, Resolution 23-13. Misty, can you read that resolution?
City Council Resolution 23-13, authorizing the granting of a privilege in the street for a prohibited encroachment or encumbrance in the right-of-way at 308 Lake Shore Drive.
Do we have a motion?
I move to accept City Council Resolution 23-13, authorizing the granting of a privilege in the street for prohibited encroachment or encumbrance in the right-of-way at 308 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidno, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff comment?
No further comment other than what's been stated.
All right. Any questions? Comments? We've hashed over this enough, huh? All right. Let's go to a roll call for Resolution 23-13.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
All right. Thank you. So we move to Item E, which is the discussion decision on 2023 Streets and Sidewalk Maintenance Program. There is a City Council Motion 23-3-2-1. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion 23-3-2-1, approving 2023 Street and Sidewalk Maintenance Plan.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 20, motion 23-3-2-1, approving the 2023 Street and Sidewalk Maintenance Plan.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
I'll pass it over to Dwayne, who's going to give a short summary on what has really been a very successful street maintenance program that I think the city can be quite proud of, and he'll give you some details on it tonight.
I thought you said short. He's got a whole presentation up there.
It's the shortened version.
Pictures.
Okay.
Well, I told Drake today, the shortened version was, do you have any questions? Maybe I'll give you a little bit more of the presentation. This presentation was provided at the Public Works Board meeting last week. Let's just revisit. The goal of the maintenance program is to basically maintain 33 and 1/2 miles of streets in the most economical and physical maintenance strategies possible and readily available. As you recall, we've got about 37 and 1/2 miles total, two miles of being DOT Main Street and two miles being county. So the maintenance program is related to the 33 and 1/2 miles. Dave, we can move on. I'll try to go through quickly. Key on this slide just shows the Pacer ratings and how we rate the streets every year and some, and some of the maintenance strategies that we use. Those ratings, of course, 10 is almost, is only available for one year after we reconstruct. So having every street at 10 is virtually impossible. A nine is a millon overlay and an eight is a chip seal. Everything else deteriorates as the year goes on. Dave, next slide. I think the key slide that we want to get to is the next slide. And as, as Drake had mentioned, I think this slide shows how this program is working. And this slide on the left side is your ratings in 2016, generally when the Public Works Board and the council really endeavor to include some dollars into the budget specifically for maintenance. And then although that's a year-old, 2022, realize that it might be a little bit better than that, even now with the last ratings, but this is a slide we used as well last year. You can see that almost 85% of the streets are six or better, which on this previous slide is a good to excellent compared to where those streets were in 2016. There's been a significant improvement. Next slide. The key with this slide shows some price ranges on, and it's hard to see, I realize that, on the screen, price ranges and some of the strategies that we use as a, as a street department for each of the different ratings. From crack filling, which is done with staff at a minimal material cost, chip sealing that's, that ranges in the dollar of $2 a square yard, to a millon overlay that's ranging about $20 a square yard recently, and a pulverizing at $40 a square yard. As we move into the reconstructions, on the street portions alone, not accounting all the sewer and the water, we're running about $120 a square yard. So when you, when you think about economical ways to prolong the life, we're talking about in the chip seal stage, prolonging the life for at least seven years for $2 a square yard instead of allowing these streets to go to total reconstruction. And so the whole goal with this program, if I gave you the long version, is we're trying to reduce that cost and maintain the roads as long as possible. 60-plus-year lifecycle is the goal. Dave, next slide, please. This slide, if we delved into it, would be the analysis that was done in 2016 that shows that we want to apply these strategies and the cost difference from over $2 million a year of just reconstruction to generally in the $1.2 million a year at a, at a five-to-seven year maintenance program. Next slide, Dave. That summarizes some of the program and the, and the goals of the program that we have and the strategies. Again, we're looking at chip seals, two to three chip seal cycles every seven years, followed by a decision to be made of a millon overlay at that point. Then following that, that millon overlay at year 21 to 28 generally, we're looking at another two to three cycles of chip seals. Now we're out to that 60-year timeline, and at that point, we're probably making a decision between another millon overlay or, if the base is failing, a reconstruct. Again, changing that lifecycle from 20 to almost 60 years. Next slide, Dave. This is a summary of this year's work. There is one error in the slide. The total for this year is $808,000 for 3.26 miles, and we are running at about a 10-year maintenance pace on, on this year's budget and this year's program. While that's a little less than the 14-year or seven-year maintenance program or 14%-- While that's a little less than the 14-year, or seven-year maintenance program, or 14%, we're running a little bit behind the pace that's anticipated. However, in this year's budget, all of the project, all the streets that are 2015 or '16 are being maintained this year. So we are caught up with this budget and with this program. Next slide, Dave. To review, if you recall, we had made some decisions last year with some bill funding, and we left some remaining budget in reserve that you approved to move forward into '23. That remaining budget was $102,000. The '23 budget was $300,000. So the available funds for this program are $402,000. The proposed estimate at this time, we'll go to bid here hopefully after potential approval tonight, we are looking at an estimate of about 94% of that being used in this program. I'll note again that all of the '15 and '16 streets are being looked at in this project, although in 2017, there was a $1 million expenditure made. So next summer, we will be looking at a much more difficult choice. If we maintain that $300,000 annual budget that we typically have, we will fall behind when we meet that 2017, 2018 streets. Again, seven years, we're looking at '24, '25, running into that large dollar amount. Or falling further behind, and that would just mean that your pie chart would slide to the lower numbers. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Council questions? Mrs. Bishop?
Thank you for the overview and all the documents to go with this. You've been following our discussions on sidewalks the last few weeks and heard the comments. Are there any surprises here that, you know, a constituent is, in a year when the construction's going on, saying, "Oh, my God, I have a brand-new sidewalk I didn't know was going in," or, "I have a brand-new road coming in here"? It doesn't look like it to me, but I want to ask the question to make sure I can make an informed decision tonight.
So on this program that I spoke tonight, this is mainly the maintenance program. That would be the chip seal, the millon overlay streets.
So nobody's getting a whole brand-new street they never had before in front of their house?
Correct.
Okay.
The only portion is the College Street, which you'll have later in this agenda. So these are the maintenance of the streets, and that happens between the curb lines, generally from the curb line in.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment. Kudos to Dwayne and Mark and the other folks that work on, have worked on the street maintenance plan. I mean, I think those two pie charts are really, show dramatically the quality of the streets of going through this program. But the other thing I think you didn't mention that I think of is, instead of just leaving a street until it gets bad enough to need reconstruction, they're getting some regular maintenance. So the overall quality of our streets, you know, like my street was reconstructed right the year that I moved here, and it's had two chip seals since then. So that's keeping it in nice shape. And so I think that's just another benefit, that people can enjoy the overall, general quality of the streets.
Thank you. You hit on a point that I had, that I skipped over, which is exactly that. The higher the rating, the lower cost maintenance. And thank you from myself and from staff. I know that they do a great job, and they do take pride in the maintenance program that they're working on, the street department. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So this did receive Public Works Board approval in the past. So let's move forward with a roll call vote for City Council Motion 23-3-2-1.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is that College Street reconstruction that was just referred to. This is a discussion decision on the bid award. City Council Motion 23-3-2-2. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Motion 23-3-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the College Street Reconstruction Contract 1-2023.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve revised City Council Motion 23-3-2-2, College Street Reconstruction Contract.
So Mrs. Fields...
Switch it.
She, Mrs. Bishop, excuse me. Mrs. Bishop, she did a revised version, because there was a typo that was corrected, I believe, right? Was that what that was about?
That's correct.
I was reading it off the agenda, so, okay.
All right, so Mrs. Bishop is the motion. The second was Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
The contract reflects the documents that were put out, authorized to be put out to bid by the City Council at a previous meeting. Forest landscaping was the low bidder for the project. Our engineer, our consulting engineer from Strand, Matt Hozler, is on the line if you do have questions of him related to the project. But it does include the changes that the City Council made at the time of authorization to bid, and staff is recommending approval of the contract award.
All right. Do you have anything to add, Brian?
Matt.
Matt? We switched consultants, sorry about that. Matt, do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add. Thanks, Rick, and yeah.
All right. Council questions, comments? Yes.
How did this come in versus the budget estimate that we were looking at?
Matt, do you have the numbers offhand?
Yep. Slightly over, about 5% to 10% over the estimated estimate, but it is under the CIP budget number of 1.23 million. The low bid came in at 1.15 million.
Any other questions? Or comments? Comments are welcome. All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Brookstone Award Package. This is the City Council Motion 23-3-2-3. Misty, can you read the Brookstone motion?
City Council Motion 23-3-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Wondra Construction, Inc., for Contract 2-2023, Brookstone Phase 8 Improvements.
May I jump in right away, Mr. President?
Excuse me?
May I jump in right away on this one, please?
Sure.
I've had some conversations with the landowner, Mr. Juisty, who's been our partner in the Brookstone development. We do have about 80 more days to award. There's been, since two years ago when we did the previous phase on this, there's been about a 37% increase per lot, cost per lot. And the owner, Mr. Juisty, would prefer to wait a little bit longer and see how economic conditions continue to evolve while we have these 80 days before we award the bid, to see how those conditions evolve and whether he would request of us not to award this bid, as he wouldn't be, as he believes it would affect the saleability of the lots. So we actually would ask, staff is asking that the City Council hold off on any action on this. We will continue to be in discussions with the landowner and then bring it back to you after some more time has passed to see how the situation has evolved and the developers, the owners' appetite to move forward with Phase 8 at this time.
So, Mr. Daley, since the motion hasn't been made at this point, do you prefer that we just pass, or do you want us to table the motion?
I would, I'd prefer that you just pass, and then we can bring it back as is warranted, without needing any additional action by the council.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? I'm seeing nods, so we're passing on that. Okay, next on the agenda is Item H, which is Ordinance 1253. This is a second reading. Misty, can you give us a second reading, please?
Ordinance 1253, ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 00207141822002.
Okay, that was the second reading. So the third reading will take place at our next meeting, the first meeting in April, where we will vote on Ordinance 1253. Is there any questions tonight on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll move forward with Ordinance 1254. This will be the first reading. This is an ATV update, it looks like. So, Misty, can you read Ordinance 1254?
Ordinance 1254, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 609 Vehicles, All Terrain, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
So that was the first reading. The second reading will take place at our next meeting, which is the first meeting in April. City staff, do you have, can you give us some comments here, why we're seeing this ordinance back before council?
Sure, if I may. Ordinance 1254, well, let's go back. The ATV ordinance was adopted at the end of last year. This ordinance amends a portion of what was adopted. In the attached item that is labeled the WISDOT ATV-U TV Ordinance Revision Memo, it has an email chain, and then if you scroll down, there are the actual suggestions from WISDOT upon their review. That is what is incorporated into the new Ordinance 1254. It clarifies, to their specificity, WISDOT, that is, certain elements that were not included in the first ordinance specifically with regard to the ATV-U TV usage being allowed in parking lots, city-maintained parking lots, city-maintained roads, streets and highways, and also at any location with a posted speed limit under, of 35 miles per hour or less. That is every road in the city of Lake Mills. So there's some redundancy there. But these were requests that were made by the WISDOT once again. The other change is some change in terminology with regard to 6099B. The language that is being changed is removing Quad County Runners, Inc., to state, "The city of Lake Mills will be responsible for installation of ATV-U TV route signs in accordance with the provisions of this chapter," and that Quad County Runners, Inc., or its successor and interest, will be responsible for reimbursement of the city of Lake Mills for such ATV-U TV route signs. So those are the two changes that were made to this ordinance at the recommendation of WISDOT. And we brought it forward in front of you because I didn't think that there was necessarily anything that was substantive that was being changed there, and it seemed like it was in line with the previous action that the council said. We're trying to facilitate this and expedite this process and, you know, get the signs up and the ATV routes up and ready for usage. So that's kind of the synopsis of the information that I have. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, let's move forward. Item J, it's currently tabled as Motion 23-3-1-3. This is the discussion decision on the Lake Mills Fire Department EMS Billing Service. So it's currently tabled, will have to come off table for discussion tonight, in light of some additional information that was shared by staff in our packet.
I move to remove Motion 23-3-1-3, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for the provision of EMS billing services off the table.
A second. Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Ms. Curler. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's 5-0, is off the table. So now it's open for discussion. We will need a motion before we vote, but if we want to go ahead and have discussion before that, we can do that as well. Staff?
Yeah, there were some, I included some updated information in the memo that includes some, a scenario, if you will, of costs comparing each provider. As you can tell with the number of calls, I used the term 80, 80 calls that the fire department would be responding to with their ambulance. That's just, that's based off of conversations I've had with Lake Mills EMS over the last several months, as we talked about EMS services and second-out calls when a primary isn't responding. And so we are expecting low, lower, low-call volume. So the numbers, you see the budget numbers, there's, Andres says the lower costs, they are not, they're not high numbers that we are, that we're anticipating here with the billing service. And so I think the most important piece of this item is contracting with a billing service to be able to utilize the ambulance service. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But the bullet points on the recommendation for Andres' medical is the flat fee per call, the assistance with the Medicare and Medicaid accounts, as well as some additional trainings that they'll provide at no cost. A few of them are listed there, Medicare signatures, HIPAA documentation, and then other necessary trainings that they provide. And so those were the reasons for the recommendation. As was mentioned at the last meeting, the other recommendation is a local option. If the local option is preferred by the City Council, that motion, a decision to contract with them would be appropriate as well. Again, from my perspective, the most important piece of this is being able to utilize the equipment and training that the City Council has invested in, and be able to bring that into service for the community. And without a billing service, we would not be able to recoup any of the costs that we have for providing that service. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? Yes.
Mr. Daley, what would be the term of a contract with either of these providers? Is that kind of up to us, or do they have sort of a minimum term for the contract, and then it's renewable? How would that work?
There's a term, there's a term and a termination period that we can exercise if we're unhappy with the service. Dan, do you recall what the termination period?
I don't recall if it was an annual contract that automatically renews. Excuse me. I don't recall if it was an annual contract that automatically renews, but that is consistent with my recollection, that there was a set term, automatic renewals, and a notice period to be able to terminate.
And the reason I'm asking is because I recall there was some concern at our last meeting, and part of the reason that this was tabled is we didn't know what billing service perhaps our next EMS provider might be using, and we maybe wanted to have some consistency, but I think we still don't know who that new EMS provider is going to be this evening. So I just wondered if there would be a certain amount of flexibility for us to shift out of this contract.
I think there would be an opportunity to terminate the contract. I also believe there will be, there would be opportunity where if we had unified medical directorship or an agreement between medical directors, that we could come to some sort of agreement as to who would be billing for the service if they were cooperating and being on each other's... If they were cooperating and being on each other's rigs in order to have efficiency of resources, to have a process in place for if it's our fire department staff hopping on the rig to assist the EMS provider, that perhaps the rig would be the deciding factor of what's being billed. I think there's opportunity there to work through that to make sure that we can have, optimize the cooperation between the two entities. I agree that is an important aspect of it, that we want to build cooperation between who we're contracting with for EMS and the fire department so this works as seamlessly as possible and we're taking advantage of the expertise, training, and manpower that we have across both services. So I think we will be able to work through those. If there are differences in medical billing or in billing services or medical directorship, I believe we'll be able to work through those. But there will be, there is the opportunity to terminate the contract if we decide that we need to.
Okay, thank you. That's actually giving more clarification on what our options are, so terminating the contract might be one. But it sounds like you're saying if we were to choose one of these providers, then even if that isn't the same billing service that a third-party contractor that we might hire for providing EMS, even if they're using a different billing service, there are other ways to collaborate and make that all work and come up with policies for who does the billing.
I think, yeah, I think that would be essential. The reason I went to which rig is going out is because there are supplies on each of those that would be utilized, whose equipment is being used. Because that's what you're trying to cover and recoup some of those costs of using that. And so I think as long as we have transparency and an attitude of cooperation among both of the entities, I think that can solve a lot of those issues and get in front of them so that those processes are in place ahead of time.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I have a couple. Regarding the termination portion of these contracts, was there a fee for either or both and if so, are they comparable?
Captain Theater?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to speak to the termination clauses of the proposals received?
I was asking just.
Could you come to the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
You predicted my question.
Thank you.
To answer your question, I just was reviewing the proposal actually in front of me and I did not see anything written into the proposal as far as termination fees or anything involved in a fee that would be for termination. To kind of give some more clarification on the way the billing works as well, I know that there was some discussion there, Ms. Curler. Each entity has to contain, each transporting entity, ambulance, whatever, has to have their own billing. They have to be able to bill for services. Some do it in-house. Most contract a third-party service just because the terminology and stuff that goes with Medicare and Medicaid nowadays is like reading stereo instructions. So to have somebody who looks at it all the time and can surf through it and knows what they're looking at, it really is beneficial. So as far as billing goes, realistically, the only entity that bills is the entity that transports. So regardless of who we use as a primary service provider here in the City of Lake Mills, it doesn't matter who they use as a billing company because their billing is going to be based on their transports. Any transports of the city, transports with their ambulance, would be billed by their billing company. So whether they're the same or they're different is really not going to make any difference. They all have to follow the same billing procedures, they all have to follow the same terminology from Medicare and Medicaid when it comes to billing. Realistically, what it comes down to is just this amount of service that you get from your billing companies. Andres, as you can see, based on the memo provided from Mr. Daley, has offered much more assistance to the fire department to navigating those waters with Medicare and Medicaid. It can be kind of a pain and me personally, as the person who has been setting up this program for the EMS, the Medicare and Medicaid part has been discouraging at most. I've been able to establish an NPI number for the city and for the fire department. We have gotten into some of that where we are hung up at this point is we do not have a billing service to put forth on our Medicare and Medicaid applications. Andres has offered to do all of the legwork and all the paperwork that comes into finalizing that stuff and to further training us to make sure our reports and other things are meeting all the benchmarks that Medicare and Medicaid require in order to make sure you're receiving the most return on your transports.
You took the floor. Any other questions?
No, thank you. That answers it. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments?
I just, I had a comment about how I would vote in my consideration.
Okay.
Just, I'm sensitive to Mr. Fields' comment and the information we got at the last meeting that ECP is a local company. I would love to support local, but when the other bid is a third of the cost, I have to consider that and really weigh that. And so for that reason, primarily, I'm leaning toward ECP as well as a couple of the considerations. Captain Theater just mentioned that they're willing to help with the Medicare and Medicaid issues. That mess is a lot to untangle and to have that help for the lower cost, I think that is valuable. So that's where I'm leaning toward my vote right now and I just wanted to make that comment.
And then just so the City Council is aware, the percentages that I used in the memo is based on information that I received from Lake Mills EMS several months ago when we were beginning the process of reviewing our EMS options and they provided what, the breakdown of their call volume essentially. And so I took those numbers and applied it to that 80 number that's been tossed around a few times as far as what we can expect as far as what a supplementary ambulance service would be responding to.
Now, all of that being said, you know, if the call volume goes up significantly, like a substantial amount, it seems the math would flip and ECP may at some point become more affordable. And I think that's probably where Ms. Curler was getting out with her questions about termination and that was also my concern with termination. So I would, you know, I want to keep an eye on the cost, I guess, is my main point here as we move forward.
Yeah, and it depends on what type of calls. So if those percentages shift, you know, the flat fee versus the percentage fee, that's going to change, you know, how that would shake out. So if we saw a shift in the types of calls that were, the ambulance was going on, that also affects the, what the, what the cost of either provider is.
Any other questions?
I wanted to comment real quick why I opposed the tabling of this motion last time around. I felt that this council owed the community a vote on this issue. I wanted to get the ambulance in service. The fire department's worked hard to get that authorized and get it up ready to go. They've been going through a lot of training. Lake Mills EMS has asked for assistance from the fire department and this is all about that. We need to find a way to get these services billed. I'm leaning towards the out-of-town option because it seems to appear, it appears to be a better value. They offer more services and I'd like to get a vote on this.
Yes?
I'd just like to add my comment and thank you for explaining what was in your mind last, at our last meeting. I think I'm very appreciative of our firefighters who are here tonight and captains and acting chief and the credentials that they have that they're not able to use when we can't put this equipment into service because of this billing. So if this is the last step that we need to do, we've made decisions over the last many months to invest in getting an ambulance and authorizing our fire department to provide this service. So I think it's really important that we take this vote tonight and I am also in support of the lower-cost option.
Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I won't take too long on the comment. I am in agreement with the other comments that have been made and I appreciate the patience of the fire department while we navigated looking at the cost because we really did not want to make any kind of decision that was permanent that could obviously kick back. But with that in mind, I feel very confident in making the decision for, as of right now, going with the more cost-efficient option. And hopefully, as time goes on, perhaps we will look into using our more local option so that we can support local. But for now, we have to do what we need to do to support our students, or, sorry, our citizens.
It's that teacher thing kicking in, right?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call.
Oh, I think we need a.
Oh, we still need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve motion 23-3-1-3, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the provision of EMS billing services. Second.
It's a motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, to clarify here, a affirmative would be for approving Andres' medical billing, correct? Okay. Everybody's on the same page? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is recommendation for future agendas. Anything tonight? Mrs. Bishop?
Mr. Waters, I just today finished drafting and submitted a resolution for an ad hoc committee to look into the mill pond and ways forward. And so that's with city staff now. I know spring break is coming up too and people are going to be off. So pending getting their comments back, I would like to put that on the agenda, at least for council discussion within the next couple of meetings. So we can get a way forward.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes?
I know we've been focused a lot on EMS and that is obviously a top priority. I'm wondering, Mr. Daley, when you think we might see something on next steps for Sandy Beach Restaurant? I get inquiries about that from time to time.
This spring certainly, prior to summer. I don't have an exact time for you right now, but soon.
Okay, and even just an update in your monthly report on, you know, what you think are the next steps or something like that, just to, because people ask.
I'd like to see that sooner than later because if we're going to go out for a proposal again, I'd like to get that moving because that's probably a good three-month process. So if we could look at that sooner than later, that would be wonderful.
Okay. We will get a, I'll make a goal of the second meeting in April to have a discussion of the City Council of next steps.
Thank you.
And then, Mrs. Bishop, I know you were working on the community center policy, but it sounds like you've got some other stuff going too, so.
No, I, I do.
Do you have a timeline?
Yes, well, not a specific timeline, not trying to punt the question or the answer. After our last discussion on the use of these facilities for political meetings, I did get a revised draft back to staff. They are coming up on an election too, so I'm just waiting for a meeting time to finalize that with them and then bring it back to council.
Great, thanks.
Anything else? All right, thank you. So next is convening into closed session to discuss emergency medical services pursuant to Section 19- or Point 85, Section 1E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session and to discuss legal claims pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1G, conferring with legal counsel who's rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated. Second.
Motion to go in closed session by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. All in favor, raise your hand. 5-0, it passes. So we're going to be moving into closed session. We will reconvene after that but will not come back onto the video. So that's the end of our video broadcast tonight. Thank you and have a good evening.